I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Pillar, would you lead us in the...
By your heads, please. To your heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that we can make decisions on behalf of our citizens and on behalf of our city that please you and are diligent in thought and do good things for the city that we live in. We just thank and praise you for all the gifts you give us. In your name of prayer.
Amen. Thank you. Okay. Three minutes from July 22nd. Any questions or comments?
Motion approved and suspended.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
And a second by Pillar. Discussion. All favor of approving the minutes from July 22nd. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Just a quick note, under 12A, we did get the state aid contract today as well, so we can work on both of them.
Okay. Okay, so any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, here another big motion.
Make motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the state aid contract under 12A.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. All right, so 5A, Braun InterTech proposal. Everybody get a chance to look at this?
Question on this, the cost of this particular service, that would be, I'm assuming, passed on to the contractor?
Yeah, that's what we have, had a bill it through us, so that is part of the...
Okay.
The whole project, we can go back to the contract on this cost. I'm visiting with Jared, he said that would probably be the cleanest business.
Yep, yeah, please.
Is this the one that has the two different figures, forty-eight hundred and four thousand? And the same?
It has a service description of forty-eight hundred dollars, yes, and then below, further down, it does, it has...
Two different prices.
Four thousand.
Yeah.
So which one is...
Probably neither. The results and they're still working on the report.
So the way they presented it, did they present it as amount to exceed, or this is our estimate?
That's the estimate.
Estimated cost, so there's scope of service and provide estimated cost for the proposed work.
So how do we clarify with this, Monty? Do we have to choose Phase 1 or 2, or...
These are just estimated costs, so there is nothing, you're not approving the total cost, you're just approving the scope of work, basically.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'd make motion to accept the scope of services as presented by Braun InterTech in this letter.
All right, motion by Pillar. Second. And second by Stern. Discussion. Casey, is it, is it a little bit too late to do this water, water, I guess?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is kinda after the fact, because they got them out here right away. To do the testing, to make sure that everything's...
Okay. Was there here the second day?
Yeah.
Didn't work tables, okay. Okay. So then, I guess, like, what are they gonna do yet?
They actually submitted all their information to the Department of Economic, Environmental Quality, and they're preparing a report, and right now, I had a brief email from Jared today that there may be some more sediment that they need to clean up.
Okay.
But that will come out in that report, hopefully within the next week. But that will go through the contract.
Mostly the on-site sample that has already been done?
Yeah, the on-site sample has already been done.
Okay. Here we have motion and a second. Any more discussion? More discussion? Roll call.
So, I, Stern, or...
I, Obadour.
I. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, down to 7A. The... Current version of the drone ordinance attached for review. And if you have any more time to take a look at that, any more comments, concerns, questions?
You know, some of our final discussions prior to tonight's opening, the discussion again, were that this, there's already laws on the book, basically, that regulate this, and all we would be doing is providing a little bit more detail. And I think at that point, it was, at least my feeling was, why take this any further and muddle up the system that already exists?
I agree. So then, therefore, we would not even have to...
If we don't add all this, it would just die on the limb? Or what? Motion to defeat it?
Well, a positive motion.
Yeah, a positive motion.
Yeah.
Both down and down.
Okay. Just to make sure we're not confused by a positive motion that we, if you're... How you state a positive motion, that you're making the motion, but you're not in favor of it.
Just like, so you just make the motion to accept it, and then say nay?
And then say nay.
All right, if someone would be willing to give a motion such as that, similar to that? But I agree that I, well, with my thoughts, discussion. Braun InterTech, a motion?
So under, so under, I mean?
Not true.
To move to approve.
So it is, okay.
You gotta wait to vote until...
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion by act. Approved motion of the drone ordinance. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Casey? So then, so then, as I read this right, you pretty much have to operate a drone within the line of sight? You know, because under, 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 I guess, development of rules, like number two, should, says, I guess, it will not be broadcasting, or I guess, if, recording images of people? Well, you can record images of people. But we are gonna be, we're gonna scratch this and go by the FAA.
And I think that particular statement there is more in reference to photographing, not in that it has to be in line of sight. And I think they've been making some, some changes to the state level on some of that as well. So it doesn't prohibit any photographing, it's only where there's a reasonable expectation of privacy.
Right, so it can, it could be over Main Street with a crowd of people, and photograph Main Street, right?
Because that wouldn't be considered, people expecting privacy on walking on Main Street.
But if you, if you deny the motion, if you vote down the motion, you vote down adopting this as an ordinance, so you don't create an ordinance.
Right.
You're under state federal regulations.
Everybody clear with that, if you do vote it down, that we will still go by the policy, the regulation that the state and feds use, and not create a law? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar?
Nay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hack?
Nay.
Stern?
Nay.
Obadour?
Nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Motion defeated, carried out the door. 7B. Abandoned junk vehicle ordinance. So we've had a lot of comments, a lot of discussion. I've had a few other phone calls, and people talking down the street, in favor and opposed to what we're, what we're looking at doing. I think if you look at the extreme, one way or the other, people get really, are really defensive and, and think that if it does happen, that we're, there'll be, within one week, we will have a hundred junk, junk cars piled up at the, at the Mercer County landfill, which that's not, that's not our intention of doing. But we, you know, we've had a lot of, or not a lot, but we had Mr. Rosenau who's here tonight, you know, voice opinion at the last meeting publicly, which I appreciate. Archie, I've tried to clarify a couple times.
I'm sorry.
Busy with you, you've been busy, yeah, I know it, I know. You know, and I've had one person come up and says, "Is this about me?" And I said, "Well, do you have four vehicles that are not operating and are, have not been moved for seven years?" And he said, "Well, yeah, but is this about me?" So this is a bigger, this is not about one individual, no. So it is, I think that it may irritate some people. I think it's gonna cause more positive action than negative. But that's just my opinion, the, sitting here in this seat, this. But anyhow, we do, tonight, we do need to make a decision on this ordinance, so definitely take more discussion, or if someone wants to make a motion, we can discuss it after the motion, and the second also.
Well, and one of the motivations on reviewing this particular ordinance was that the ordinance that was in place, already existing, and much, much in alignment with communities all around the state of North Dakota, and I've talked to acquaintances of mine over in Minnesota, most, most towns have nuisance ordinances which, which carry into it abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles, things of that nature. It's, it's a common ordinance that occurs all over the place. And our reason for looking at it is that the way that ours was written currently, it just, it causes a lot more interaction with our law enforcement and citizens and the city employees, to where the timeframe associated with it is, is extended almost to the point where it lends you to not want to enforce it, just because there's so much effort involved in it. It's really designed not, not to, to go after folks that are fixing up vehicles and stuff like that. I've, I've thought long and hard also about the comments made with regard to the cost of pulling the certificate to, to fix up the vehicles and stuff. I equate it somewhat to a building permit. I'm gonna build a new home. I, I'm, I'm required to, to meet all the laws associated with the building of a home, pulling a permit, paying the fee associated with that, much of which covers the administrative costs for issuing out these permits and keeping track of that, and I think by having that permit in there for folks that are treating it as a hobby and actively going after that, albeit it may take longer than a year or two years oftentimes to, to, to do these vehicles. It's, it's a means in which you can identify those individuals that are following the letter of the law and would prevent them, a tow truck or something, from coming in there and, and pulling that off and hauling it up to the landfill. So there's avenues to accommodate the people that are, that are doing projects. You know, maybe if I were to make a change at all to this, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to extend it, because I understand, I've got projects, I've been wanting to insulate my garage since I built my house, it's been my winter project for the last fifteen years, and I haven't accomplished it. So I understand sometimes things drag out. So maybe there's, there's an opportunity for, we, we have built in it right now, the language indicates one, one renewal after you first pulled that permit. So that limits it then to two years, and then you gotta do something about it.
What does that mean, a year? Every six months.
Every six months, is that, oh, okay.
Gives you one year.
So one year total, and I guess that, that would be something...
We could think, absolutely.
That, that I would, before I would approve a motion to, to carry this forward, I would amend it to somehow come up with some language to extend that out, because I understand that it might take longer to, to fix up a vehicle if you're going down the path of doing it legitimately as a, as a collector.
Well, I just like comment, this has been going on for five years, and one of the reasons getting aware in these situations, you keep nibbling away at it. I think you guys have come up with, I'd say, somewhere from good to excellent ordinance here. And I, if you're going to sit here, add in an item and make these little changes, it'll never get done.
Michael, with all due respect, what I was proposing is, let's, let's come to a decision tonight on this, not go, go home and ponder it, but put something as an amendment to that particular portion of the language, and then move forward.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I came here not intending to say anything. I wanted to see how things bammed out. But the thing is, you're missing the entire point. The point is, my hobby deserves as much respect as the voter and campaigner people. Okay, that's all I'm saying, just make me equal. They can have their stuff sit on their property, I want my stuff to sit on my property. End of story.
I appreciate that, Archie, and I totally understand what you're saying.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, rather than you guys here running along, I wrote down some plots on this, and I'll try to give you a synopsis, this isn't too long, but I'll give you a summary of it in just a moment. But the long and the short of this is, I moved here in nineteen seventy-six, we built a house in nineteen seventy-eight. And before I built my house, my wife and I went to research into the property we were buying. I think any real person buys property, buys it, they do, do what I call due diligence. You find out what the nature of the property is you buy. At that time, I came to the city commission, and they assured me the property in North Carolina would not turn into commercial. Assured me all these things wouldn't happen.
However, they didn't have that, they didn't have that right to assure anything, guarantee it not to turn. You understand that, Casey?
Okay, I'll go for it, I'll accept it. Now, when a property owner purchases property, buys property, and Jerry, what he said is correct, they, they can't insure something for eternity. However, when I built that property, the existing ordinances were in effect, the ones you have right now. Okay? I built my property with the expectation that the city commissions of Hazen would enforce those ordinances and protect my property value. Frankly, they generally never did that, okay? I think that if someone comes to Hazen, and they pick up the city ordinances and the way you guys are governing the town, you have made it public what you expect of citizens in the town, how you expect them to live, that's a condition of moving here. I've tried to live up to what you expect of them. And all I'm asking you is to uphold what I was promised in the law in nineteen seventy-eight. And you're currently trying to do that, and you're currently trying to improve on that. And as you said, every city in the country has ordinances like this. And it's not, and they are enforced, and they are enforcing it. And if, when you go, if citizens are asking you to enforce the existing laws versus somebody asking you to violate them, I think the decision is clear. One of the problems you have, I know Jerry talked to some of the surrounding neighbors, I don't know who else, but when you talk to the people who are up against these violations, they all agree that these violations should not be allowed to exist. And they don't want, they don't have the courage, they just, they just don't wanna make it public, it's not. So they, they don't come in here and say anything. But I can attest to the fact that I've talked to three of them today, and every one of them feels the same way as I do. And of the ones I talked to, two of them are contemplating selling their home, just like I am. And I cannot find any reason that you should not enforce it. You can't give any legitimate reason, I've looked at it from every angle. You are supported by state law, you're supported by federal law, there is nothing in the law that keeps you from protecting property values by enforcing these ordinances. And you have the right to do it, and so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So like I said earlier, some people have different view of this than others. And we will get these same two arguments throughout the community. We could gather twenty people at a time, and we would hear the same thing back and forth.
Well, wait, can I make some comment regarding that? Just by taking a poll, by driving around town, you can see that I would say eighty to ninety percent of the people in this town agree with and comply
And abide by.
With, with what you have, okay? So when you say, you get twenty people, I'd add to that, of that twenty, fifteen would say, go with, go where it says you have or approved.
I wonder if you can add my... Casey?
I guess I've been on the board, I guess, like, ever since, yes, twenty twelve. And I know this has been brought up ever since then. And I'm hearing why that we have to change our ordinance now, is because we have to make this quicker, you know? I mean, we've had, I guess, all this time, why not start the process, you know, on our old ordinance, you know? Instead, we just wanna pass this and just hope that, hope that these people will then say, "Oh, I'm gonna follow the law," you know? And I mean, you know, I guess, so now, as we pass this ordinance, I think we have, I guess, jurisdiction outside of town, like a mile and a half. So we're gonna go after, like, those people, or are we gonna, or... Or else are we just gonna go after people in town that we didn't want to go after?
One of your decisions, being a commissioner, you can help direct us in any of those directions that you want to see a case out.
Well, you'd have to be...
I wanna be, I mean, gotta be fair.
Gotta be consistent, absolutely consistent.
And I don't think it's just because two thousand twelve that we've talked about it, we've had change in this board, we've talked about it some more, we've had a change of police chief, we've talked about it some more, we've heard, you know, and why haven't we done something sooner? Well, maybe we are trying to be the nice guy. I don't know, it's, you're right, how, and how hard, how hard and diligent do we enforce? You know, are, are we gonna take a section of town and say, "Okay, this is what we're gonna, for the six months, this is the area we're gonna focus on, and we'll make it known throughout the community that we've got four or five different areas in town?"
The, the challenge you run into is, is, it is, it's citywide. You have to start somewhere. How do you decide where you're gonna start, you know, I don't know the answer to that. But I know that when, when I was given the, the police portfolio, I went and I sat down with our chief at the time, and I was shown a folder. And in this folder, we had documentation, we had photographs, and, and so they were effectively going and, and having conversations with folks, pursuing some things. We didn't have the time to have a, a place to, to tow them, so things didn't get told. But letters were going out, and, and they were, they were going through the whole process, which, again, drags out. So it wasn't that no activity was occurring, there was activity that was taking place. It may not have been visible to, it being maybe your next-door neighbor, like, maybe it was, you know, another portion of town and stuff like that. And we had situations where we made contact with the individual, we made contact with our, with our fire department. If you look right now, we have three vehicles that are sitting over the fire hall right now. All three of these vehicles were donated, if you will, through the, the process of, of reaching out to these folks and saying, "Hey, would you be interested if we came and got this and took it to the fire hall to chop it up and, and practice on?" And, and we've been successful in, in that. So there has been some activity, maybe not as, as widespread as we'd like to take care of all of the problems in the cities. Yes, Mike?
Well, contrary to what some people may think, I, I believe in discretion, I believe in reasonfulness, and I think the discretion to the police, and even the discretion for you guys, has a place, because that's the way the world functions. But I would suggest that give people time, cooperate with people, with maybe upset. But to me, the obvious place is you start with the worst cases, you don't pick a section of town. You, somebody says, "These are the worst violators." You go to those people, you say, "We have decided we're going to do something about this, and we expect to see some improvement here..."
That's wrong.
"...in X amount of time, okay?" And then you, you, you work from the bottom up. And it's like the police out here, and they have to decide what drunk they're gonna arrest, or are they gonna arrest a drunk? They start with the sloppiest, worst drunk they find, and they work their way up. This can be a process where you rather do it over a period of time. You don't have to do it instantly with everyone, you can show good sense, discretion. And I, I don't think any reasonable citizen would feel bad about if you did that. What they, what I wanna see, and I think what reasonable people wanna see, is, yes, you are moving in the right direction, okay? They don't wanna see, they wanna see the glacier retreating. And that, that is, I think you guys can figure that out without offending too many people.
Yes, sir.
I'm carrying a secretive decision about who's the worst guy.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm...
Well, we're looking at him right there, that's, that's why they're here.
We've been voting.
Well, your point, the point I'm trying to make, you know, you can say that this is the worst person that you've got, and you could be trying to clean his lawn up, and not making any headway. Are you gonna go and talk to him first and say, "Do you need some help?"
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I still have a problem with the wording, because all it deals with is vehicles. It doesn't deal with old boats and campers and all that other crap that people collect in their yard. I'm telling you.
It does, it does.
But it doesn't specifically indicate that, do you understand that?
No, it does.
It needs to be clear.
I think we do.
It's kind of vague, too.
Yeah, it is very...
I've talked before in my previous meetings, and this...
But the reason I said Mike was wrong was because, have you reached out to these five worst offenders? I'm sure Mike already has a list of them, because he's been involved a long time.
You don't have to be a rocket scientist to do...
I'm just saying, who is it? Have you gone to them and said, "Do you need help?"
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I'm not gonna allow either one of you to be, Archie, you can do it outside.
I used to do it privately, but now...
I realize that. I realize that. Anyhow, we, we know how all, all of you feel.
Right.
And, and understand that the, the police are not going to, to get the dogs out and, and, and go to any of these homes and, and, you know, go in there with guns blazing or anything like that.
That's what Mike said.
They're not saying gently approach them, ask them if they need help. Yep, and that's, and that's exactly what, the way that we would do it. You know, but, but you have to have the ordinance that has some teeth in there that, that allows you, for, for those individuals that maybe refuse. We see it right now with, you know, we have an ordinance that says that, that you need to keep your grass cut reasonably well and stuff. And so in that ordinance, there's, there's some teeth in there for those individuals that say, "You know, screw you, I want my yard to look like a prairie" or something like that, you know?
See, I disagree with that ordinance.
We understand.
And that's fine, we understand, Archie. That's fine, everybody's, you know, welcome to have their opinions and stuff on there, but that is what the ordinances are.
And if we need to put specific language that says boats, campers, and RVs, or whatever, I don't know, I don't know why we can't, if it's a junk car, why can't it be a...
If they're, if they have to be licensed, it would, it would seem that... If, if they're, if they have to be licensed, it would, it would seem that would be right in alignment then with, you know, cars.
Mike, do you, do you have their?
We decided that we would go with the definition under the North Dakota Sentry Code in thirty-nine and one oh one, which is about eight pages of definitions of vehicles, boats, trailers, campers.
So it, it.
So it is, yeah.
It's covered. But can I, can I make intercheck the point here, okay?
As long as you're not repeating yourself, Mike, absolutely.
I'm gonna, I'll try my best.
Thank you.
The function of government is to deal with problems, okay? I do not go out and arrest people speeding on the highway. I shouldn't personally have to enforce ordinances. If I tried to meet individual citizens and confront them, it's just asking that citizen to get mad at me. And when I did that in the past, they ran over my mailbox two times, they came to my house and threatened me at one o'clock at night. So when the city advocates that I have to go to these people and enforce these rules, I think that's absurd.
We're not asking.
Well, okay, and, but Archie is telling me, and I think in reasonable cases, good neighbors, you can go to your neighbor, and you can talk to him on a reasonable basis. And after you've tried that, I don't wanna confront my neighbors and get in a fight. And so I think, I think that, that there's, being good neighbors is a great thing, and I, and I, and I agree with everybody, that just talk to the guy is, is step number one. But once you've done that, where do you go from there?
Offer help.
So we, and actually, we've had people come in and remove vehicles at no cost. And all the ladies down the street who's had two cars, and, so we, we do ask for help. And I think, Casey, back to your point, I think it's under Sentry Code, it's a lot of definitions. I don't know if you, how much more specific you'd like to be, if that, if that's good enough.
Well, I guess if we want the public to know.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so they're not gonna.
Delisted.
Go and find that code.
No, no.
And say, yeah, I'm gonna read it.
May we give the top, top ten items or?
The, the, the challenge, and, and I see it in my workplace when we write procedures. You know, the, the more content you have in there that's dependent upon matching content at the state level, you, you're, you have more work from that day forward to make sure every time they make a change there, that that change is reflected back here. And that's why oftentimes you'll reflect directly, or reference directly to, you know, what it says in the state. And, you know, they tell me all the time, ignorance of the law is no excuse. So we are obligated to, you know, if we have concerns, or we feel that we're being treated unfairly because somebody's talking to me about a boat, or, or a licensed trailer, or a non-licensed trailer, or whatever, then it's my responsibility to understand what that law is, and then maybe it is, pull up that, that link and see what that means.
Yeah, I think this is a completely bogus argument that these people need to. Right now, I would volunteer, with my four-wheel drive truck, to hook on any junk vehicle and drag it out of someone's yard, and get it to a junkyard, provided I can sell it for the junk value. The people I know with junk vehicles, they themselves are moving around in their own yard.
I'll do it for free. I'll give them the money.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll do it, I'm with Archie. I'll do it for free and give them the money, too.
Okay, you win.
Archie, did you, did you, you had your hand up, did you have last comment before you think, make your?
Yeah, it needs to be very clear to everybody, because it seems rather discriminatory, the, the language right now.
To cars.
But what I'm saying is, just give me the right that the camper, boat, people have. That's all. I, I don't expect a parked, a parked car on the street.
True.
Okay, that, that's stupid. But I have a camper, I own five trailers, none of them sit on the street. Perhaps we should just say, if you own something, you better fit it on your own property.
Well, we've got that argument today, everybody, and my phone calls.
You know? But, but, now listen, that, that's an extreme remark on my part, because I don't care whether they park it on the street or not.
True.
I understand that that, I see, I've seen Mike's camper parked on the street in front of his house many times. Anyway, a couple of times, okay? But that was just a time that I noticed. So anyway, uh, uh, that, I, I said that in the last meeting, that is a proven obstruction of the roadway that doesn't necessarily have to be there. If you park a vehicle on the street, great, you know, but it's really not storage for your campers and your boats. But I don't care about that. All I want is to be treated the same. Because beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and I love old cars. And, and why is my sense of aesthetic any less desirable than anybody else's? Just because there's more of you feel one way than another, doesn't change the way I feel.
And again, Archie, that's really not the.
But that's where this is going.
It's your turn.
Yeah, no, that's where it's going. You see? And, uh, so, uh, and, and, you know, I understand, I really do. I, I, I don't like people's places full of crap either, although mine might be considered that by some people, although I try to kinda keep it under control. But mine stays in the yard, off the street, off the boulevard.
I got it.
And, and, I mean, I'm beating it up, but it keeps veering off, you know? And so, uh.
Yeah.
In Mike's case, he just missed the peak and marked it.
Hey, Mark, what would we, uh, would we, Casey?
I guess, like Mr. Quinn had gave us, gave us a copy of, I guess, the state law right now, you know? And I like this language here, you know? I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, it doesn't say that your vehicle has to be inside, it just has to be blocked from view, like a fence or trees or shrubs, you know? And I think that's a more, a more, I guess, uh.
So could that be a standard camera and boat sitting in yards, too?
I would say so.
As long as you have spare spare.
That's what I'm saying.
It's blocked from view, you just look from the public, you know?
I appreciate your suggestion, but I, I think, I think you have a good, the ordinance you have, I think is, what you guys come up with, I think it's very good. But I think, you know, like I, I, I just like to make this comment, I, I know Archie, he does keep this stuff neat, he is actively working on it, and, and I, he, that's one thing, okay? He's an active guy working on his stuff. He is different from the guy who parks a truck in his driveway for five years and never touches it, okay? So I, like I suggest to you guys, work your way up the food chain, Archie's pretty high on the food chain, so maybe I'll sell my house before you get to eat it. But that's the way you do it.
Do we have a list of addresses that are in violation right now? It's like the police have a folder, right?
They have a folder up there of, of individuals that they have contacted.
Is it accessible?
Yeah, I don't know. I would, I would assume it's public record. If you went up and talked to Jim up there, he could show you the, the history of everything that they've been doing as it relates to, to that.
You don't have to be a rocket scientist to read the existing ordinance and look in somebody's yard and clearly see it's a violation.
So under, under section twelve point two one three there, down on B six, I would like to propose the one time only those three words be struck from that statement. So then it says hobbyists, collector permits for said vehicle shall be renewable upon a payment of the fifty dollar fee per vehicle. Do you wanna address five as well? If I can read it. All such permits shall expire a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah.
Um, what, what I'm not in favor of is, is paying fifty dollars to get a certificate and then holding on to that certificate for fifteen years. I think there's, there, there needs to be some reasonableness, and, uh, you know, that you're going to get your project done.
Let's make it reasonable by including all unregistered trailers, campers, and boats.
Okay, first, I'm, I'm dealing with the hobbyists, because those, I, I would consider to be the responsible individuals. I, I'm not disagreeing with the boats and all and that type of stuff, but I want to, I wanna address this particular piece right now. My, my fear on eliminating number five is, is then you pay fifty dollars one time, and then you can, you can just let it sit forever.
Oh, you can, okay, do it, like you said, give them, give them ninety days of first, just give them two times. But the, the problem, what you, what you do is you only pull the teeth from this. The other, the other thing I think you have to think about with these fines and so on and so forth, that at some point, if these people just ignore you, which I guess a lot will, that there is a lien put against their property, or it's added on to their taxes, because if they, as soon as they figure out, are they going to the city to court? Yeah, whatever they want. But, but they, if you don't put any teeth in this, it goes nowhere. And that, and, and the other thing, is there economic incentive, the way you have it written, to get rid of this stuff? And if, if, if these people don't have any economic incentive, which is going to be, they're gonna put a lien on their property, they're gonna have to pay to go to court, if you don't put an economic incentive on these people, they won't get off of dead center.
Well, I believe if, if, if you just eliminate the, the one time only for renewal, if, if I'm a hobbyist, I don't know how many times I'm gonna wanna pay fifty dollars on that particular car that I'm working on. You know, if, if every hundred and eighty days, I gotta pay fifty dollars again to abide by the law.
Make it escalate.
That's, that's some teeth.
Make it, make it the first time it's fifty, the next time it keeps going up, and it gives the hobbyist the incentive to get it done.
And maybe I'm just too cheap, but I think fifty dollars is a fair amount of money. You know, if I have to pay that every hundred and eighty days, I think that gives me some incentive to finish my project.
I think that's extremely unfair unless, unless it goes across the board to the unregistered boats and campers and stuff, and I will be driving alleys and, and giving you the list of people.
So, so what you're saying is hobbyists that are fixing up a boat, or fixing?
Boating is a hobby, camping is a hobby, crocheting is a hobby. If you look at the state law and the way it's written, it's written very clearly to make a distinction between operable vehicles, you can read it right there in the North Dakota State Law. They make a distinction between something you use to get to work, harvest your hay, go to the lake, and they make that distinction between that and a piece of inoperable junk. It's written right in the North Dakota statute. Inoperable does not constitute junk. It doesn't, it, there is a difference between, the state law makes the distinction that works everywhere else on the planet.
Yes, it does.
It works in Kazakhstan, anyway.
I mean, I do agree with you, Mike, okay? But then it also goes on to say, as long as it's not in public view, as long as it's behind a fence or, you know, and I think that's a reasonable thing.
Well, here's some, here's some, what, you, I mean, you think about what you've done.
I agree.
A lot of responsible, responsible people who wanna have these hobbies, have bought buildings, and they take their hobby out on that side of town, they build building. Others, these, these other people buy a storage shed, they store their junk in the storage shed, they go get it as they need it. So they are economically being imposed on to have their hobby. Why should another group of hobbyists say, we get for free what these other people have to pay for, okay? And I, I'm not dissing what you said. I, I, why should I care if a guy has a fifteen-foot hedge around his yard, and he's got crap piled fifteen feet high? I don't care. And, but here's my problem with this. Actually, my neighbor I have the biggest problem with, right, right now, I thought money fell from heaven. They towed away his old truck, and it was gone, and I said, hallelujah, the game's over, and then he went and got it and brought it back. But most of, most of his crap, in the summertime, you can't see most of his crap, and I think he was headed in the right direction, planting a hedge around his property. But, but the problem is, in the winter, when the leaves fall off, you gotta choke her.
I think you could build a fence on your side of the.
Did you wanna touch back to that again? Mr. killer?
Or maybe go halves with him, I've seen that happen quite a bit.
Well, I talked to an older woman in town.
Casey, would you deserve to, 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 you'd like to amend to this, or?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, the fee, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, as Archie knows, I mean, these projects take longer than a year, that's just the way it goes, you know? And I mean, like, wintertime, wintertime, you're not gonna do any work on these vehicles, you know?
No, unless you have a shovel.
Yeah, yes, so I mean.
So if I register my cars, they're, they're exempt from all of this, right?
If they're licensed and registered, then you're fine.
So with what you just said there, Casey, would you be willing to look at, at number five and extending that, you know, from a hundred and eighty days to something a longer period of time?
Three sixty, yeah, you know, and then a year.
A year, a year.
Yeah, and they pay that fee like every year, you know? I mean, I think that's a lot of money, yeah, so I mean.
Including the can for some boats and unregistered trailers that are big enough to require registration,
Because what, what this particular section is looking at is the, the, the person that's out there taking whatever it is, and they're fixing it up.
Right.
So I don't, you know, it makes it feel like it's a car, when you, when you're just saying there, the said vehicle shall be renewable or.
Any one of the items I listed could be a project.
Hobbyist collectors.
He's fixing up an old camper, fixing an old boat, I've seen quite a bit of the old boat thing, and some of the old camper stuff.
Hobbyist collector permits for restoration, repair, or to non-operating wrecked junk, virtually dismantled vehicles on premises. And so someplace you set up higher in this ordinance, it defines what a vehicle is?
I, if, this is, I don't mean to be rude, but it's incomprehensible to me.
Then, Mike, then stop.
No, well, I'm not, no, no.
They'll, they'll ask you to leave. We wanna, we're trying to talk through some of this. Mike, Mr. Quinn, we are trying to talk through some of this also.
Okay, that's.
Which is rational and reasonable.
But what, this, you used the magic words, rational and reasonable. You have people here trying to accommodate less than twenty percent of the population, while eighty percent of the population is not.
It's all our community, Mike.
Okay.
It's all our community.
It is.
Eighty or twenty, doesn't matter.
You said the word rational, reasonable.
Yes, I did.
If you are a rational and reasonable man, you will do what's good for the most people in haste. That's my argument.
And that's where we're going here, Mike. We wouldn't be sitting here talking about this to Matt if that, if we're not here for our community.
Apply that to racial situations.
I have no problem with three sixty five. Okay?
And I feel, although it's not, it's not in your face on the billboard defining a vehicle as, it, it references to that definition at the state level that does include all of those items that you referenced.
Mm-hmm.
As part of that in the Sentry Code. So I'm good with, with three hundred and sixty-five days, renewable, and as long as the individual continues to pay the fifty dollar fee to get that certificate, you know, whether it's for two years, three years, four years, I'm okay with that, because I, I think those, those folks, they are, they're, they're supporting a hobby. I think what we're, we're really trying to accomplish on behalf of our citizens out there is to clean up the messes that are out there. And, and we, we know what those messes are, in my opinion. When, when I look at a, a yard, and there's, there's eight cars sitting there, and some of those cars are loaded up with their garbage and stuff like that, to me, that's a nuisance situation.
And I'm with you on that. And then, and if they come to the point where they absolutely refuse to do something about it, I can see stepping.
Yes.
But, Mike, is your neighbor's old truck registered?
No.
Are you sure?
Sure, it doesn't have bumpers on, Archie, he did not have a license.
What's, what are the, what's the wish in the board? Will those amendment changes?
I would make a motion to accept it with those particular changes to the, the language. I would make a motion to accept it with those particular changes to the, the language. You, you got those documented correct? Striking out can be striking those three words and changing the one eighty to three sixty-five.
Mike, I could, I like your three sixty-five idea. I would just bid, if you go with first year, fifty dollars, three sixty-five, that's fine, second year, a hundred. You're not on the board. Mike, I can demonstrate something for you. Good night.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, second, Mr. Stern, discussion.
Marty, can you, so we're gonna do three sixty-five, just cap on that if you could.
The hobbyist permit will be three hundred and sixty-five days in, in all areas where the timeframe is referred to. And the section one time only in B six will be stricken so that uh, said vehicle shall be renewable upon payment of the fifty dollars per piece of gear.
Motion by Ford. Second by Stern. Any more discussion?
And, and I guess for, for discussion, we, we can work with Nancy to make sure, you know, that this is relayed to, to our friends over in the police department. That our expectation is that we move about this, that we're not going out there with guns blazing and dogs, that we are, we are going and, and, and we want to have conversations with individuals, offer of assistance, uh, as, as we see fit. We had talked about that once before, reaching out to folks and saying, Kate, if you are struggling to get rid of this vehicle, we, we can help you out with that and, and, and remove it, uh, whether it goes to the fire department or out to the landfill or whatever. I think, I think we can offer up that particular service.
No more discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried.
Can I thank you guys, I know I've been a nuisance to you, but I appreciate what you've done.
Yep.
It's been a long, long process, but I think you're all going to be happy in the long run, which made a good decision. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mike. Eight A, site authorization, gaming, Haysen Winner Sports or Bison Barn?
This is gonna be a whole lot easier, I promise.
Gun control sex meetings.
Let me know, thank you, Peter. Anyway. I don't know if you heard or not, but the, the, the good news, Bison Barn is reopening under new ownership management, which is always a good thing, more businesses for better. We have Haysen Winner Sports has been approached to provide a share of the gaming there. Uh, we're just asking for the board to authorize us being at that site when it gets open. We're shooting on my paperwork, I'm having the first of September, that may be optimistic, but I want to be ready so that when they are, I'm right there.
We need a motion to approve this new site location.
I should specify it's for just the electronic, they're, right now they're asking for just the electronic machines and one paper bulletin sheet, no light paper.
Okay. Thank you. Motion by Hack, second, second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call. Hack.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reports, water sewer garbage.
Nothing reported this time.
Mr. Hack, streets cemetery. Mr. Stern, finance busing library. Met with, um. Met with Peggy and, and I guess I learned about more. More about the, I guess, uh, the busing, I guess, services, things they do and things I didn't know. Well, I guess before, so. Well, I think like they had, they had wanted. Was a pressure washer over there, so.
Who knew?
And hopefully here I'll be at the next, um, next, I guess, the library board, I can do, that'll be made up here, so. Thank you. Uh, police, fire, forestry, I'll just, I, I talked to Mike Frailly today, uh, forester, he's been at training and, uh, he learned that there are now three, you know, different ash beetle bugs that are attacking the woodwork in North Dakota other than just the emerald ash bore, which is the super pervasive destroyer. But, uh, they've been out, they've been doing, we're cutting trees, you'll see one that's down the street here, it's limbed out, uh, which had the black, uh, black ash knot in it and.
Is that Mike Wells' yard?
On the corner down here, uh, yeah.
The reddish, reddish.
Yeah. So I just want to comment on that. No buster tonight and I have nothing for me. Marty, anything?
Nope.
And Dave, Dave's off the rest of the week. Vacation. Ten A, North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. Marty, you want to touch on this?
I can't, uh, basically, North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund was approved by the legislature to take on the state fire tornado fund, which oversees the insurance for all of our properties and personal property. Sometime before the renewal in July of twenty twenty, we need to designate our agent for that. I have been approached by Heritage Insurance and Stroll Insurance, uh, we've been with Stroll for many, many years. So I guess, you guys want to think about it, we need to designate an agent. The sooner the better, but, um, you don't have to make that decision tonight.
When they have approached you, have they given you, is there a fee or are they just administering it or are they basically just administering it?
So kind of is in the past, like what kind of insurance did they give us before I was brought to COVID?
Well, all of our liability, business auto and our inland marine, our equipment and that stuff has always been insured within or it's just now that state fire tornado is getting out of it. Administering that program, so they put it in with the North Dakota Insurance Reserve.
They just rolled more stuff into it.
Yeah, basically, the, it's, with the agents that we have now, apparently it should be a little more seamless as far as the coverages and keeping those coverages up and making sure that people, you've got the proper limits admitted because.
So the compensation comes from the state if there is a claim and they're doing something on behalf of this whole fund?
Yeah, the insurance reserve fund is all claims and written, yeah.
Okay.
And they are still looking at the health insurance aspect, there's going to be two multiple insurance reserves, so hopefully more on that next year.
I'm assuming if we've got multiple parties coming to the city, offering up that service, there, there must be some financial gain associated with it?
I'm sure there's some administrative percentage or something that they could, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just curious, the motivation for, for a union, state bank and the other organization that you manage insurance there?
Yep, you guys want to make the motion or move on tonight, you can, or like Mike said, can wait also. It's a few, I don't know what to. I will remove myself. This is not an issue.
We've, we've had claims in the past.
No, you could watch one, but you've got to.
Issue your twice, no.
There's an urgency, as I understood, uh, Mike was the boss and he had back to you.
He actually.
I mean, there's really, I don't know what the competition is anyway, other than the, their fees, I mean, the job is safe, no matter where you're.
Sure.
Nation is, is basically a referral party to the.
To the insurance reserve.
If there's a claim, of course.
And, and in all honesty, I mean, I could go home, but I don't know what I'm gonna, I don't know what I'm gonna think about.
Yeah. What is, what, yeah.
You could invite them in and ask them.
What are you gonna give us? In this case, not, you know, I don't know.
Move to appoint, uh, Stroll.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
I abstain. Thank you. Motion passed. Eleven A, two thousand and twenty, preliminary city budget. As you see in Marty's notes, two thousand and twenty budget is the updated to, to increase insurance to fifteen percent. He made a three, four hundred dollar addition for equipment budget, for the bus facility and a pressure washer and related costs after the changes. The anticipated levy request changed from three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three ninety to three hundred and seventy thousand three ninety. Based on estimated property value will require a slight levy, uh, required a levy slightly less than the previous year.
Our total levy under the changes that I've put in will be five hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars among all the funds.
So are you suggesting my taxes are going down? No, just check.
So if we want to accept this, we need to make a motion?
We also need to set the hearing date for the public hearing on it. Generally, we just go with the second meeting in September, which would be September sixteenth. It's at six o'clock during the regular meeting.
Make a motion, we accept the twenty twenty preliminary city budget with the set changes.
Motion by Hack.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar, discussion.
The motion include the hearing?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sixteenth at six o'clock, sorry.
A little motion and a second.
Six o'clock? I thought it was before the meeting.
No, it's, it's part of the.
All right.
Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
No.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Twelve A, the twenty transit grant contract, so you said you received this today, Marty?
Uh, the first one, so the federal portion I had received earlier, uh, the federal award is a hundred and three thousand two hundred and six dollars. I notified today that our state aid award is twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. So a little over a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand two. Between the state and federal portion of the transit program.
So that goes, that goes into our busing budget, basically?
Yes. The agreements will need to be signed, so we'll do the motion.
To approve signing, approve.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. So then, so then Marty, uh, um, like versus, versus like I said, previous years. Does it lie?
Yeah, uh, the state is down a little bit because obviously the state doesn't grow our budgeting or proportionate as much to the state aid for transit as they have in the previous years. The Dakota Transit does have lobbyists who are working with them, so the next session I'll see if they can do that increase again. The federal award is pretty much the same as the last couple of years.
So at the state level, what type of difference? Ten percent, five percent, two percent?
Well, it, last year was thirty-one thousand, compared to twenty-seven, that's the difference.
Okay.
Is it a percentage? Is it a percentage?
Yeah.
Fifty fifty or?
Yeah, yeah, operating is fifty fifty, administrated is eighty twenty.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Provo of the bills. Anything new, Marty?
Uh, later, she, her, what came in today?
So is that a, a one-time expenditure there on the labor and materials for the surveillance stuff?
Yes, that was the one where they had estimated to be about seventeen ninety.
Okay.
I hope they're fifteen because we purchased the wires separate and the.
Make a motion to accept the jobs presented.
Motion to accept the bills by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you all. Yeah, good luck.